Okay, we'll call to order the special meeting of the Upshur County Commission and the Buchanan City Council. And I would ask that you bow your head for a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance. Amen? Would you please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I'd like to begin by thanking everyone for coming out this evening. We've got a nice crowd this evening. And we will begin our items for discussion and presentation by Mr. Bill Hamilton. He has a presentation for us, so Bill, if you'd like to step up at this time, we'll give you the floor. Evening.
Certainly like to thank the Commission and the Council for having these joint quarterly meetings. It shows that we're progressive, proactive, and that we're willing to work together on some of the problems that face our community, our county, and our society. I'd like to -- of course, I'm Delegate Bill Hamilton. I represent 90% of Upshur County in the 45th District. I have with me tonight as Delegate Peggy Donaldson Smith, who represents Lewis and two precincts in Upshur. Your number is 46 or 44? 46, okay. I'd also like to appreciate the people from the folks from the Family Resource Network and the Substance Abuse Council for being here tonight. And what I'm here tonight to ask for or to talk about is a problem that we have throughout West Virginia. And it's clandestine meth labs. And I'm soliciting, along with Delegate Smith, we're soliciting the county and the city's support in passing a bill, which I believe, if we can pass this, will be another tool for law enforcement against these clandestine meth labs. And what this bill would do, it would restrict the sale of pseudoephedrine-based products, requiring a prescription. Now, why we want to do that? Well, as I said before, it's another tool in the fight against clandestine meth labs. Since 2007, meth labs have increased 63% nationwide. We're fighting two battles. One, against strung-out addicts, and the other, against some of the world's wealthiest and politically connected corporations, the drug manufacturers. Law enforcement. Law enforcement, we can't arrest our way out of this meth lab problem. What we'll try to do is choke off the cooks' supply line if we pass this legislation. Oregon passed a bill requiring a prescription for pseudoephedrine-based products in 2006. Since they passed that bill, their meth lab confiscations have gone down 96%. That's what they reduced them in their state. By 2008, Oregon's violent crime rates were the lowest in the country. And by 2009, Oregon's property crime rates fell to the lowest in 43 years. Mississippi passed our bill in 2010. Since then, the number of meth labs have reduced 74%. Mississippi still has a meth problem, along with Oregon. But passing their bill has given Mississippi law enforcement more time and Oregon's law enforcement more time to concentrate on traffickers who are bringing meth into their state instead of working on meth lab confiscation and cleanup. Meth is a very highly addictive drug. I'm told it takes one time to use meth, and you're hooked. Cocaine's five or six times. But meth is very highly addictive. It wrecks havoc on the users. It ravages their teeth, their skin, their heart and lungs. Injuries cooks, the people that are cooking the material. It wrecks and it wrecks in toxic property, rental property, hotels and motels. Just last year, in Canola County alone, we had three different motel chains that had to shut down all of their operation or a part of it due to the fact that somebody went in and cooked in a motel room. And you've got the contamination problem. During the baseball tournaments, we had, I believe it was either Jefferson County Baseball Team or Martinsburg, but they were in a section that was cooked. They were out playing the first game. They couldn't get, wouldn't let them back in their rooms because it was so toxic. And they had to go back home, get new uniforms, and come back and play the next game. But it's highly toxic. The bodily injury risk of first responders, law enforcement, firemen, emergency personnel. And here's something that I've, as representatives of the city and the county, and as myself as a bit, as well as a former business owner, I forgot, I don't know that anymore. But for the people that pay workers' company, you've got a problem if you have people that are injured on the job due to a meth lab. We've had garbage workers in Huntington that were contaminated when they picked up a garbage bag that was full of meth ingredients where they'd cooked. Domestic violence, abuse calls, all attributed to meth. Children in foster care. We still have, we still are sending some of our foster care kids out of state. Very expensive to do. The financial burden that all these things cause on the cities and the counties and the state. Regional jail costs. I think the last time I looked, ours was over a half a million. Maybe it's climbing more this year. And of course, that's not all attributed, that's not all attributed just to meth. But that's a good percentage that's mounting that figure up. Public defenders. You know, these folks that are doing this drug, they don't have time to work. They don't have time to take care of their kids because what they're concentrating on is doing their drug. And as soon as they come down off of it and they pass out and they wake up two days later, guess what they want to do? They want to do meth again. You know, they're not taking kids to school. They're not cooking meals for them. Other costs, they won't go to work. You know, lost productivity. According to a 2009 Rand Corporation study, meth costs the U.S. more than $16 billion each year. Our general revenue budget in West Virginia is $4.2 billion. That's four times what we spend in our general revenue. Every year, the drug manufacturers can defeat legisla-- this type of legislation is another year of profits. Last year reported $605 billion in sales of pseudoephedrine-based over-the-counter drugs nationwide. Legislation. Pseudoephedrine products required a prescription until 1976, and then it was deregulated and made an over-the-counter drug. Twenty-five states have attempted legislation requiring a prescription for pseudoephedrine. In all but two, Oregon and Mississippi, legislators have failed as the drug manufacturers have deployed all-star lobbying teams using campaign-style tactics such as robo-calls and huge advertising blitzes. The Consumer Healthcare Products Association, they spent $303,000 in three weeks to defeat a bill in Kentucky requiring a prescription in 2010. So why would we, as legislators, want to go against a consumer group? A group that supposedly protects consumers? Well, as Paul Harvey used to say, now the rest is a story. CHPA, Consumer Healthcare Products Association, is a Washington-based drug industry association. They represent makers of over-the-counter medicines and dietary supplements. Multi-companies, national companies like Pfizer and Johnson &amp; Johnson, just to name a few. They hard robo-call firms like Winning Connections to contact registered voters. Now, remember, I said they contact registered voters. They didn't go out and just call the general public. They went to each county, paid, I guess, I guess we charged a penny a name for the voter's list, got the voter's list, and that's who they concentrated on. And in no time, when they were making these contacts, did they mention the word "meth" or "clandestine meth labs." Now, interject a personal story. Two years ago, in 2011, we had House Bill 2946, which was the, we called it the pseudoephedrine bill. And that was to make required a prescription. In a day and a half or two days' time, I received, I know, between 200 and 300 calls to my office in Charleston. Now, most of my time when we're in session is spent in committee meetings. So I was able to intercept two or three calls. And the ones that I intercepted were people that I knew. And they were calling me, and here's what these robo-calls do. They'll call the Capery household or the Davidson household, and they'll say, "Do you realize what your delegate, Bill Hamilton, is trying to do with the bill?" And I co-pontered that bill. "He wants to take your cold medicine." "Oh, really? You want to talk to him? Why, I sure do." And they hook you right up to the Capitol. I'm sure Delegate Smith got just as many calls that I did. The three calls that I intercepted, when they started, they said, "Well, you're trying to take cold medicine. We don't agree with you doing that, and we don't want you to vote for that bill." "You know what we're trying to do?" "Well, yeah, you're trying to take my cold medicine." "No, we're trying. That's one ingredient. You can't make this meth without the pseudoephedrine. That's, you've got to have that ingredient. You can't put salt in it. You can't put Clorox in it. It won't work. You've got to have the pseudoephedrine product in it." And they said, "Well, I don't want meth labs." Every time I opened a paper, there's someone getting arrested for a meth lab. I think we had one this week, two people arrested. So that's what they do. We passed that bill in the House, 77 to 23. Boy, high-tech's nice when it works. All delegates, including myself and Delegate Smith, all delegates in central West Virginia representing Barber, Braxton, Harrison, Lewis, Randolph, Upshur, and Wester County, voted for that bill. The opposing delegates expressed that the bill violated personal freedoms, inconvenience to public. Yes, it will. But I've found in my 11 years as a delegate, 90% of the legislation is not intended for the majority. It's intended for the minority that's breaking the rules. That's why we have to do things, you know, and adjust laws that we have on the books. And my other answer to them, when they talk about an inconvenience, stop signs, red lights, speed limit signs, they're an inconvenience, but there's a reason they're there. It's called public safety. And people can say, "Well, I'm not around those drugs. If somebody wants to use them, it's their life, not mine. It doesn't bother me." But folks, we don't, I think some of us don't understand, yes, it will bother us eventually. Right now, the Department of Highways, that runs the litter program in West Virginia, they put out a memorandum a few months ago, "When you're cleaning up these highways, don't pick up two-liter bottles." Because now, instead of doing a process that takes 27 hours, they can do a process called shake-and-make, make it in a two-liter bottle, and it takes 45 minutes. The bill was defeated on the Senate floor. It was a tie vote. When you have a tie vote in legislation, it dies. It was probably, in my 11 years, it was the largest lobbying effort that I have ever seen. And I don't know, I can't speak for Delegate Smith, but I mean, the lobbyists came out from everywhere against this. And we had some that were in favor. Now, let's flip forward to 2012. In 2012, the legislature passed Governor Tomlin's bill establishing the NIMPLEX system. And what the NIMPLEX is, it's the National Precursor Log Exchange. And the drug industry backed the bill. In fact, in a lot of states, the drug industry will, they'll push this so hard, they'll do grants to fund this NIMPLEX system to get it in place. And of course, legislators look at it, "Well, wow, that's great. We don't have to spend any dollars to do that. So we'll take their half a million dollars and set up the system." They backed, they backed the bill under the understanding that it would block customers from purchasing pseudoephedrine-based products once they reach the limits set by law. West Virginia's law is three boxes per month and 20 boxes maximum per year. Kentucky was the first state to adopt the NIMPLEX system in 2008. Since then, their number of confiscated clandestine meth labs have tripled. I heard a lot of that. That's what we said. The NIMPLEX system began in West Virginia on January 1st, 2013. Now, we were told, just like they were told in Kentucky, that it would decrease the number of meth labs. Last month, I joined, or two months ago, I joined a task force with the Canola County Health Department. Canola County has a huge meth problem now. I mean, it's every day. The Canola County law enforcement has confiscated 103 meth labs so far this year. But according to my brother, chief deputy, and former Canola County Sheriff, the NIMPLEX system has not helped to find one of those 103 labs. They're finding these labs through tips, through routine patrols, and ongoing investigations of other crimes. I've checked with my local law enforcement. Our local law enforcement sheriff's department, city police, have not found any clandestine meth labs based on the NIMPLEX system. Now, the NIMPLEX system is working in some cases. We've blocked a lot of sales. Upshur County law enforcement has confiscated 10 labs. Well, I guess as of this week, 11 labs. We got another one. And not one was discovered by the NIMPLEX system. But so far in West Virginia, and folks, we're only eight, almost eight months into the year, 330 labs so far have been confiscated in West Virginia. We're on record to double the number of clandestine meth labs that we had last year. Now, let's talk about sales of the pseudoephedrine-based products. Canola County pharmacies sold 59,647 boxes of pseudoephedrine-based drugs this year. That's from January through July. Now, according to the 2012 census, there's 192,179 citizens. So we're looking at 31%, which would be the highest per capita sales in West Virginia. Now, that's a lot of running noses, supposedly. Nicholas County ranks number two in the number of sales, followed by Putnam, Wood, Harrison, Wetzel Counties. 11,635 boxes of this drug has been blocked, though, by an NIMPLEX system. Because the person that goes in, and they've already bought their three for the month, and they try to buy four or five, you know, two more, then the system is catching those and blocking them. But there's nothing that we can do in law enforcement to get them for intent. I mean, it just throws a red flag. It blocks them. 121 boxes were blocked in Upshur County. Upshur County has sold 3,248 boxes this year. And we have 24,477 residents in Upshur County, which is a 13 and 1/4% of our citizens are buying this pseudoephedrine-based drug. I spoke with, I know that the retail chain pharmacies, Rite Aid, CVS, all handle this product, but I spoke to two of our local pharmacies, what I would call mom and pop, Miller's Pharmacy and Thompson's. They don't sell the product. Both pharmacies told me they don't want to put up with the hassle selling that product. Just this week, Fruth, I may be mispronouncing that, Fruth Pharmacy, they own 25 stores in West Virginia and Ohio, they will not sell the pseudoephedrine-based products. They've started selling Nexofed drug and Zephyrex D. That's the only two they'll sell. Now, they have pseudoephedrine in their ingredients, but when these meth cookers try to use those two products, the pseudoephedrine chemically turns to a gel, and it won't decompose right to make the meth, so it blocks them. So I don't want to point the finger at the drug industry and say they're all bad, and I'm saying they're all bad, but we've just got to find another way around this to stop these labs because they're just, they're becoming too costly. The reason Delegate Smith and I are here tonight, as I said earlier, and must when I started, was to seek your support. We need your association's support, the municipal league, the county, the county association. We need you behind this to help us pass this bill next year. Now, make no mistake, the drug manufacturers have already come out. In fact, one lobbyist that represents the West Virginia Retail Association made a statement in the Gazette, in the Charleston Gazette last, last week, that she said, "NIMPLEX is working." She said, "We've confiscated labs in Harrison, Randolph, and Mineral Counties, do, and we found those labs based on NIMPLEX." Well, I know Sheriff Morano in Harrison County personally, so I called him. And he said, "Well, we don't have the problem that some of the rest of your counties do with the number of labs we've confiscated." He said, "But let me double-check with my drug task commander." They called me back in an hour, and he said, "We didn't bust any labs based on NIMPLEX. They were routine investigations." I've called the sheriff of Randolph County, and he's not returned my call yet. In Mineral County, I didn't, I just got behind on my retirement duties, you know, working on different projects, and didn't make that call. But please, when you go to your association meetings, please bring this out, you know, and ask them to help us pass this. Now, I've heard negative comments about it, as I said before, is it's going to inconvenience people. It's going to require them, if we pass this, they'll need a prescription. But Dr. Dan Foster, who was a senator, and he was in the House of Delegates before that, he is leading the charge on this task force, and I have to give him a really a heads-up for someone that's been in the legislature for 12 years, and then he's away from it now, but he's still behind pushing this bill. But he made this statement. He said, "You know, a lot of my clients are coming in and saying, 'I don't want to fool with the registering on that NIMPLEX system. Write me a prescription now.'" And the doctor can. There's 120 products, cold medicine products, on the market, and only 12 of them have the pseudoephedrine ingredient. Now, some people will tell you, "I can't take anything with the pseudoephedrine. That's the only thing that works." And that may be the case. But what we found two years ago, and this came from the Medical Association, was a lot of people that's taken that pseudoephedrine-based product over the counter that shouldn't be taking it, and they're not reading the warning on the box because if you have high blood pressure, you shouldn't be taking it. I thank you all for allowing me to make this presentation, and along with Delegate Smith. And if there's any questions, Delegate Smith will take. No, I'm just kidding. But it, you know, we really appreciate you giving us time to make this presentation. And with that, if you have any questions, I don't know if I'm probably just about out of time, so.
Anyone have any questions for Bill? I will say, the county commission's board of directors will be meeting in Barbersville in, is that?
Central Virginia.
Okay. And we'll be discussing legislative issues. And if you get, we have actually a form that we could fill out and submit legislative issue requests. So if you get with Megan, get the wording on that, and I will ensure that that comes before our board for a vote then.
Absolutely. I appreciate that. And if you have any questions in the future, please, you know, contact either one of us. We'd love to talk to you. Yes, do we?
Will you keep us informed when you get in session as to how it's moving, when it's introduced, when we need to start calling our delegates?
Absolutely. It was kind of a, it was kind of weird. The northern panhandle all voted against the bill, and about half of the eastern panhandle voted against the bill, and some folks in the very bottom of the state, Mercer and Wyoming, I believe. But central West Virginia was all, we were all together on it. I mean, it's, and not all counties. I have statistics with me that came from the pharmaceutical, and by the way, these information that I gave on the number of boxes sold and how many were blocked, those all came from the West Virginia Pharmaceutical Board. Those aren't my figures or Dan Foster's figures or Delegate Smith's figures. Those came from the pharmaceutical board. And I'd be happy to share those with you. But one of the, one of the comments that we've heard from the drug manufacturers, "Well, why don't we just stop? Why don't we just pass the bill and say, 'If you've ever been convicted of a meth lab, then we'll block you from, from buying it.'" But I had a person tell me a few days ago that was involved in an activity a few years ago. He said, "Do you think I'm going into a pharmacy?" And he said, "As soon as I go in and buy something that has that in it, within two hours, the state leagues or the service department's going to be in my residence because my name's going to pop up." And when they run my name through NCIC, it's going to show I've got a prior conviction." And he said, "Guess where they're coming? He said, "I'll just let my nose ride."
Bill, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
When you're saying central West Virginia, all the delegates supported passing the bill, can, can the counties and the cities independently prohibit the sale of this product?
Well, you did. The city did with the bath sauce, so...
But we, we could do it as a city and county to prohibit, and it sounds, I don't know, that'd be an interest of mine.
Well, I don't know. That, the, this is considered a scheduled buddy smiling up there. He probably already knows the answer. You know the answer?
No.
Want to help me out?
No, go ahead.
My guess would be you can't. And of course, I understand, I think our city's one that's applied for the, the bill, for the bill that we passed to add another 20 cities.
Overall.
We will apply. We will. Okay. Okay, you have it, so.
And that would give us...
That's a good question, David, and that's something I probably, I mean, to do some research on. Let me, let me do that.
I think the only drug that just passes is the next county.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, but if you get, I mean, if central West Virginia, all the delegates from those counties agree, you know, eventually, I think that would maybe take hold of something. I can't believe any delegate would know not to limit this kind of unbelievable drug. It's just really sad.
Well, it's, yeah, it, it really is.
What's the impact on the average individual? How many boxes of pseudoephedrine would the average individual buy in the course of a year? One box, two boxes?
I, I don't know, but I've never, I've never purchased any.
So, I mean, the impact on the individuals is probably pretty minimal, and it's like anything else. If you need a Z-Pak or something, you call the doctor and get a prescription.
Well, as somebody was, you know, they brought out, said, "Well, for the people that don't have insurance, they can't afford a prescription, they can't afford to go to a doctor." Well, yeah, I'm 63 years old, and I don't think I've ever had a doctor's... Well, yeah, I'm 63 years old, and I don't think I've ever had a doctor charge me to write a prescription.
It will.
Well, I'm sure they'll start, but some will, but I've never had one. Of course, if it's, you know, if you're really sick, you shouldn't be asking for something over the phone anyway, you should go see your doctor, but...
Bill, would it help if we had a community group that would go around to these different pharmacies that sell this and ask them not to? Would that, I mean, I know they're, they're big corporations, too, if you would...
Well, now, I just heard today that Pfizer is looking at this Nexofed drug, that this, that has the compound in it, that when you try to use it to cook meth, it turns into a gel, and it doesn't work. So, you know, this may be, and by all these 25 states that have run this bill, this may put the fire under the drug companies, say, "Hey, we better..." So, if that works, so be it, then we don't need the bill. And they'll take our product off the shelf. So, we wouldn't progressive on this, progression on this over 10 years, we put it behind the counter, maybe sign for it, you know, and then we tried, that's not working, then we tried a prescription, that was defeated, and then we did a NIMPLEX, and so far, that's, it's worked some, but it's not worked to the extent of what we thought would. JK?
Has there been any investigation as to, okay, I can go in and buy one now, but then you pass this law, I still want to go in and buy this stuff, or get a prescription? Is there been any investigation as to what the cost to the consumer might be on a, on a switch from over the counter to, to...
No, there's, I mean, I don't...
Well, it was, excuse me, it was reported in an article in the State Journal today that somebody had asked a pharmacist, and it fails me now, but that the $15 box now, if it goes to prescription, would become a $25 box.
Okay.
I can't quote the source.
Insurance paid for it, and then it dropped down to a $5 box.
Right. And insurance will not pay for an over-the-counter medicine, I mean, it has to be a prescription, so that's another plus and a favor. And the problem with the NIMPLEX system is they're smurfing, and we're not talking about the little blue people, you know, but they're going out and hiring, taking a van loaded people, and they go around the different pharmacies, and they buy their maximum, come in, and they pay them cash, and that's how they're, they're getting around the system. And law enforcement just can't, Buddy can attest to that, he spent 35-plus years in law enforcement, there's only some, you can't be everywhere. I mean, and, and, you know, we, we're on record, double the number of labs, that's the ones we're finding. How many out there that we're not finding?
Okay, well, we thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
And I think you're preaching to the choir, but I think if any opportunity we have to influence some of those that, that, you know, have voted against it, then we certainly can do everything we can, but it's nor, on a state organizational level.
Hey, Donnie?
Bill, or Dave.
Did you turn off the air conditioner?
Yes, we did, we're trying to save money, things are tight with the county.
I think you should put it back on, it's hot.
Is it hot, I'm sorry? Well, it's...
Bill, thank you.
Well, Bill, ladies and gentlemen, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Bill, good job.
Thank you, Bill.
It wasn't that hot before Bill started talking, Dave, I don't know that I had anything to do with it.
Thanks, Bill.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, the other, the other topic we have is discussion regarding water issues, and the reason that came up is that Jim Ferry, our OEM director, told us a week or so ago at our meeting with our elected officials, that their next exercise is going to be a drought condition in Upstate County, and I don't know, maybe this wasn't the best year to, to do a drought condition, exercise, full-scale exercise, but, and we, we talked a little bit about it. I remember, I remember over the past years, and one time in, in a meeting like this, it was probably a John Wick County City meeting, that Burl Smith gave a presentation on, you know, what's, what's the chances, what's the scenario, what happens, you know, if we do have an extended drought, and it seemed to me like at one time, it was actually, water was pumped out of mines into the Buchanan River, because I think at that time, it didn't do any good to use soap, because it didn't lather, the water was so hard. And, you know, we just thought it might be a good, a good opportunity to spend five or 10 minutes to talk about that from, from the city's perspective, as to whether you all have an emergency plan?
Well, Donnie, I don't move about an emergency plan, certainly we have, we're thinking about these kinds of things all the time, but a drought condition, as it's defined, Jay will chime in when I tell you wrong, but the, a drought would assume no rain and for 90, for 90 days, and temperature, daytime temperatures in the 90s, that would define a drought. And during that drought, when the water quits flowing over the dam, over in the side of College there, the minute that it stops flowing across the dam, and we're, we have drought conditions, we have 70 or 72 days of water supply for the system that we're providing water to now. So without interrupting the system, we would be able to supply water for 72 days. You know, I think if that sort of thing occurred, we do have some contingency arrangements to curtail usage, we probably want to turn off the supply to some of the big users, you wouldn't get, go through the car wash, those kinds of things. It's good planning for those kinds of situations. The likelihood of 90 days in West Virginia with 90-degree temperatures and no rain at all is pretty slim. We've all lived here for a long time, we've seen some dry times, but we've never seen that, not to say it couldn't happen, but I don't know how far we could extend if we curtailed the usage by 50%, no, you know, no watering lawns, no washing cars, all those kinds of things, how far we could extend the, the supply beyond 72 days. Jay, you got any comment on it?
Not at this time, Mayor. I know that regularly, the city of Buchanan regularly takes cross-sections of the river to see how much silt and buildup has occurred over the time period, and what that does is it just increases your storage capacity. We're due to redo that, you know, in the next year and, and develop a number to see how much water, as the mayor previously mentioned, how much, how many days of water supply's in there, but I think he hit it on the, on the edge with his explanation, and I don't have any additional information at this time.
Well, probably, I, I went on the internet after we started that discussion and looked for city's emergency drought plan, and up top, Texas, I think it was Fort Worth, Dallas, and they had like a 27 pages, and basically what they did, as the drought started and got to a certain point, they started rationing measures, and then the farther it went, the more severe they got, and Larry Farnsworth, with the, who's president of Mount Hope Water, I believe his brother, one of the drillers, was in an area where they had drought conditions, and he said what they did, and they talked about their wholesale customers like Mount Hope and the PSDs, and, and how they rationed them, and it got more severe as the drought got more severe, but whatever the area was, Larry said what they did, they went around every week and read the meters of every customer, and you had so many gallons of water you were allotted, and if you went over that, they shut your, they shut your water meter off, you shut, shut the valve. They probably would have to turn it back on at some point, because I don't think you could, but, but if it gets that severe, then there'll probably be some pretty severe measures that would have to be taken, and, and I don't know, Jay, maybe you know how many millions of gallons they estimate are in the mines that, I think there was an agreement, wasn't there Kenny, years ago?
Well, I think there's still a plan in place where we could pump water from the Adrian Mine, and the impoundment in the river would account for about 72 days.
Right, just that alone.
The, the water that's in the mine up there would account for six or eight months.
Right.
There's that much water in the mine, and all we do is pump it into French Creek, let it flow down the river.
And do some chemical treatment.
Right, right.
That's the next thing, but yes.
It's water.
There's a lot of water in the mines around, in and around Upstate County.
Right.
And I can't remember the one on Glady Fort, but, you know, it had a, a large volume of water, and, you know, you could contact those companies or, you know, do some engineering takeoffs and determine how much water is stored, but, you know, I don't want to say that there's a plan in place, but there are contingencies and resources available, being the mine water, you know, and some pumps that would, like the mayor said, put it into the upper portions of the, for the southern part of the county, let it flow this way, but, you know, I, I think we're all right.
Well, at one time, you know, there was talk about building some kind of impoundment in French Creek, that area there, to build a reserve, and by today's cost, you look at millions of dollars to do something like that, and with the federal monies and the state and the condition area, and that, that's not much of a chance of that happening. Has there ever been a time that the water stopped running over the dam?
We had it down to, how wide was it, Jay? About three feet right in the middle, just barely.
It's barely running.
Last summer, and then it rained.
Right.
So, we were getting ready to start to count the days, but it, but it rained before it quit running over.
Okay, all right, well, I think we've had...
Donnie might, might add to that discussion. You talk about stages, and, and as the drought gets more severe, the way I see it is that if, since all of Buchanan's water comes from the river, in fact, almost all of Upstate County's water comes from the river, when it stops going over, that's as severe as you can get, if it doesn't get more severe, you ought to start your, your mandatory rationing right at that point.
Right.
Because you're not going to get any more until it rains.
Right.
It's not like you're going to be able to produce it from wells or some other source.
You've got your reserve, and that's it, you know how much you have definitely.
You have your reserve, and that's it, right there.
I know that Tom and Water Plant and myself, on a daily basis, monitor the water levels, you know, in the morning, I monitor in the morning and the afternoon, you know, I've got two-year-plus data since I've come on board, you know, and, and we're trending upward. Last year was the, the case that, you know, kind of gives us a baseline of how bad it has to be and what certain water levels, but we're not anywhere near those levels that we were last summer, you know, of course, we have a wet one, but, you know, we're, we're monitoring it every day except for weekends, well, Water Plant's monitoring on weekends, but I'm not, and, you know, to keep that in the back, you look at, you see the history, develop the graph, you know, so we'll know, you know, when it starts going down, and if we need to make certain calls to, you know, start considering, you know, rationing or, or other measures that need to be taken, but there's precautions at least.
Very good, very good. Anyone else? I think it's been a good informative meeting, and Bill, like I say, when we get our county commission, have our legislative session, we'll, you get with Megan and get that wording the way you want it, and we certainly appreciate everyone coming out, and we'll look forward to getting together in the future. Thank you very much.